Mayor at seven o'clock. Ready?
Ray, bring me some water.
Good evening. The City of Marine City Virtual City Commission Meeting is called to order on Thursday, March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, at seven P. M. Can we please have a moment of silence to send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support? Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Roll call, Commissioner Bryson. And Commissioners, when you respond, could you please identify the city and the county that you're in?
I am here in the City of Marine City, County of St. Clair.
Commissioner Hendrick.
I'm here in the City of Marine City, County of St. Clair.
Commissioner Callahan.
I'm here in the City of Marine City, County of St. Clair.
Commissioner Claussen.
City of Marine City, County of St. Clair.
Commissioner Kreidler.
I'm here in the City of Marine City, County of St. Clair.
Commissioner Ross.
You're at my home in the City of Marine City in the County of St. Clair.
Mayor Verkaman.
I'm here in the City of Marine City and the County of St. Clair.
City Manager Levin.
Here in the City of Marine City, St. Clair County.
Thank you. I just want to make a quick comment before we begin. Due to the closing of Marine City Middle School and High School because of some of the recent outbreaks of COVID in our community, and also because of the inclement weather that prevents us from staging people and their standing outside, the City Manager and I made the decision to hold this meeting virtually. Posted on the fire hall door is a notice stating that we are holding tonight's meeting via Zoom to provide additional time for those people to go home and dial in. I'm requesting a motion of support to take a fifteen-minute recess. Roll call vote, please.
We'll need to get a motion first.
Oh.
So moved, Commissioner Kreidler.
Support, Commissioner Callahan.
We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Wait, question. So what are you gonna, you're gonna do fifteen minutes now until we do the agenda? Is that the intent?
Yeah, I just, I just want everybody, if, case somebody went to the fire hall, like right now, I want them to be able to have time to go home and zoom in.
Sorry. So it's seven oh three right now, so we would come back at seven eighteen?
Seven eighteen. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
I didn't hear that.
Commissioner Hendrick?
I said yes.
I didn't hear you. Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen?
Yeah.
Commissioner Kreidler?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. We'll be back at seven eighteen. And just a reminder that we are on Zoom for those of you who are at home, to make sure you use your mute buttons if you have it, so that you're, you know, we don't hear any background talk, because we have a very important meeting tonight. Thank you, and we'll see you at seven eighteen. Okay, is everybody ready? We're gonna continue. Welcome back from our fifteen-minute recess. I just want everyone to know that I had a staff member from the Marine City offices stationed at the fire hall from six forty-five to seven fifteen tonight. She was there to hand out Zoom instructions to anyone that showed up, and she just let us know that no one came to the fire hall. So obviously, all of our announcements worked, and those that are attending are attending via Zoom. So welcome back. So we're moving on to approve the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda with the following amendments. We're removing agendas items six B and six E. That's B like boy and E like Edward, the closed session minutes. And then we're removing agenda item eleven E, the Eagle Scout Beach Project, the Eagle Scout that wants to give a presentation, would like to do that in person. So that's what I need.
I'll make, Jake, I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda as amended.
Commissioner Callahan, support.
We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Wait, 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 question. So I've got a few questions. This is Commissioner Hendrick. First off, I understand when you changed this meeting yesterday, but I guess I'm concerned because the school letter is dated March twelfth that came out. So if we're gonna be more proactive, we should do these things a little ahead of time, which would have given a lot more people more time to prepare via Zoom instead of trying to do it the day before. So my other question is, how was this posted yesterday? Because don't you have to have an eighteen-hour post?
Uh, Madam Mayor? May I respond to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Lisa, I understand, I understand the process there. I can advise you under, under the Open Meetings Act that the requirement for your eighteen-hour issue is in the law at section five, parent four, but it really only relates to a rescheduled regular or a special meeting. So we all know that if you're gonna call a special meeting, you gotta have an eighteen-hour pre-post or for a rescheduled regular meeting. This, moving it from in-person to Zoom and not changing the date and the time is not, is not a rescheduling of a regular meeting. This meeting was, was part of our regular schedule that was approved by all of you when we approved, you know, the meeting schedule for the year. So this was not, not technically, when you read the, the law and the case notes, a rescheduled meeting. So I don't think the posting, the eighteen-hour rule in that, in that provision, subsection four, under section five, under MCL fifteen, point two-six-five, would apply here. I did, I did note, I hung up and got back on, there were thirty-one people on the line, and I was involved in making, confirming the mayor's decision to have someone posted at the physical location, and, and the decision to have a fifteen-minute interval to allow people to zoom in. So I think, I think we've complied with the law here.
Okay, thanks for that information. I have one more question then, regarding the public hearing portion. What about that part? Because our notice goes out, don't these have to be published also?
Well, the, the, the public hearing is still going to, is still going, you know, is, is still on tact. It's just, I guess the bottom line, Lisa, is we haven't rescheduled the meeting. We've only, we've only changed the format of the meeting, which I think under the COVID processes in place in Michigan is, is totally justified in this, in this instance. So the pub, the public hearing posting still states the time and the meeting where the public hearing will happen, and I'm pretty sure we have a ton of people on the, the line who, who know that and who are, you know, waiting to be a participant in that.
Okay, and thanks, Bob. I mean, the reason why I'm asking is, so these questions, it's for the public's benefit also, so that's why.
No, I agree, I agree with you. It deserves an explanation. I, I think you guys have done the right thing in this instance. I think that right now, we would, we would know, Lisa, that we would be over twenty-five, and we would have, we would have part of our public in their cars, or out in the rain right now because of, of the restrictions. So I, I, I just think this, this was a lawful and a, and a good way to go with, with all the precautions in place.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. That's a good thing to note.
Anything else?
It's good for the public to hear the explanation, I think, as well.
Absolutely.
Right, and that's why we took the extra step to be at the fire hall for a half hour with Zoom instructions in hand. Any other discussions about the agenda? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen?
Yeah.
Commissioner Kreidler?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to public comment, anyone is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name and limit your comments to five minutes. City Commission will not respond, but we will follow up as necessary.
Yes, I'd like to speak, please. This is Philip Alexack. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, what I want to talk about is the brownfield that Tom and Kathy Burton are asking for in the Marine City Apartments. What I want to bring up, if you.
Mr. Alexalak, we're gonna be discussing that, and there'll be time for comment, what we do to new business.
Well, is there a public hearing on it? Because.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead. I was wrong, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, anyways, if you look at Water Street, you have a tremendous amount of businesses on Water Street as is. A lot of those business owners would have bought the building, they would have raised the finances, refurbished the business on their own. Of course, the value would then go up. They're serving customers, Marine City gets the tax base out of it. The point is, they haven't piggybacked, with the exception of the inn, into taxpayer money to use that as a way to fund that business, to refurbish it. So I just don't think it's fair to other businesses to hand out a brownfield to Tom and Kathy Burton, who do already have one on the end that they're working on paying down as well. The building itself, when you buy a property, you know what condition that property is in. If you're planning to run a business, you buy a building, you know the condition of the building, you are gonna know that you're gonna have major repairs, minor repairs, whatnot, to get that in order. What I'm concerned about is, if this becomes a habit, and not just for Tom and Kathy Burton, for anybody that's going for brownfields, if they see this as a way to just buy a building, it may be a little, you know, functionally obsolete lot, whatever, and say, well, I can just get a brownfield, then before you know it, how many brownfields could you possibly have going on at one time, where we're waiting on the tax revenue to get to that point where it's paid off, where we can see the full revenue from it? Why not just wait and see if someone else will buy it, or if they want to do the business, let them refurbish it on their own and run the business? They, they have the choice to do that. And then, um, I just, the four hundred thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars over the course of eighteen years, possibly longer, that's taken away from schools, that's taken away from people with millages, you know, items like that. I think when the brownfields came out, and this is my opinion on them, of course, they were really designed to help clean up big sites that were hazardous sites, where it'd be a huge undertaking to get rid of contaminated soil, contaminated items, whatever it may be. Why not, if we're gonna look into doing brownfields in this community, I would rather see them go out to industry, where, let's say, for example, the best I can think of is the Detroit Casket. We all know that site's contaminated. We all know what went on there, we all know what's polluted. I wouldn't, would not be opposed to a brownfield going out to somebody who bought that property that wanted to put some sort of complex in that would serve the city. I wouldn't mind helping out in that regards because it cleans up. But just to update a functionally obsolete or dilapidated building, which any other business owner would have to do on their own anyways, and have in the past in this town, bought it, developed it, we saw the tax benefits, I am one hundred percent, again, I don't think it's good for the city. And on top of it, with all, everything going on with COVID, and we even looked at our own budget to see where we're gonna be at with tax revenues, everything else, we don't, do we know what we're getting from the state? What are their budgets looking like? As far as I knew, there was huge delinquencies in water bills as well, because you couldn't shut off water for people that weren't paying, you know, for services. So we have a lot of other financial issues and financial things to look at, and I don't think throwing a brownfield into the mix is a very good thing for this community right now, especially when the property can be developed without one, if someone wants to find investment sources other ways, or sell it off to a developer that wants to just develop it on their own, go with it from their own, and we'll see the tax benefit. That's all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
I want to speak. Okay, Rosalie Squires?
Go ahead, Rosalie.
Two-eleven, Michigan, I don't know if we're doing that this time, but two-eleven, Michigan, all right. Financial assistance as tax breaks, subsidies, and tax captured revenues given to corporations or businesses are defined in the dictionary as corporate welfare. The definition has been around since the fifties. The language in justifying corporate welfare often gets murky. All the corporate welfare affects all businesses. There are two kinds of entrepreneurs. Market entrepreneurs that put in their own money and take their own risk, and political entrepreneurs that receive the corporate welfare in the name of common good. We have two people on the board that took their own risk and money for their own businesses. They are perfect examples of market entrepreneurs. The bad part is, the political entrepreneurs compete with the market entrepreneurs. In this case, while the market entrepreneurs' taxes are used for millages, county, and city services, the political entrepreneurs' taxes will be used to pay for his loan for business improvements. You are setting a precedence if this is allowed today. Around town, there are at least five buildings that could be considered brownfield buildings. We just ended Tifa one-eighty. Can we afford to start supporting political entrepreneurship? Political entrepreneurship discourages market entrepreneurship. We have some really solid market entrepreneurship going on lately, like the fish market, Marine City Marketplace, and the mall the Sweet Tooth is in, are all market entrepreneurship. It is a bad idea to support the political, political entrepreneurship. The Vertons have gotten more than their fair share of grants and political welfare. Don't defuse the spark of market entrepreneurship. Let the Vertons take their own risk and use their own money this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosalie. Anyone else?
I would like to speak about the Marina proposal. Hello?
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead. What was your name?
My name is Rita Rorick.
Go ahead.
I'm opposed to the, this proposed Marine City Marina, seven docks or thirteen slips does not make it a Marina. First of all, there's a loss of property taxes for this property. In these pandemic times, when many citizens are unemployed or underemployed, do we really need to spend the money on seven docks? The city has lost sales tax revenue from restaurants and stores that are barely open. There's also the loss of sales tax on the former Kmart, and Tractor Supply has not opened yet. We are having to pay huge sums of money each year to fund the city retirement fund. Many of our streets need to be paved or repaved. Do we really have the money for this project? Yes, there may be grants, but they never pay for all of it or the ongoing expenses. The owner wants the city to buy the vacant land with docks by insisting that we also purchase the adjoining house and then tearing it down at the city's expense. Is there a grant for that? The house has been for, for sale for over a year and hasn't been sold. Is the price too high? A house in my neighborhood was demolished recently, the cost around twenty-four thousand dollars to tear down a burnt-out house. It was only about a third of the size of the house they want us to buy, and having to remove any asbestos will add to the cost. The property with the house is not needed for the docks. There is already parking along the docks. And who is gonna repair the docks, or replace them when there's flooding or damage by a boat? Who's gonna cut the grass or empty the trash? More work for the DPW on the weekends, especially in the summer. What about the cost for signage? You need to post the hours of docking. Will there be penalties for staying overnight? Is there gonna be a charge for the docks? Are there gonna be reservations taken? Or is this a first-come, first-served basis? And who is gonna enforce the rules? Do we have to change the charter to add ordinances for regulations for docking and boaters? And how much is that going to cost? Is there going to be an additional webpage on the city site? Are you gonna post water levels? And how much is that gonna cost? And how much to market and promote the slips? Is there a budget? Because if no one knows about them outside the city, then why do we need them? There are boat-sized height and draft restrictions because they have to come under the Laboon Bridge. Now, because of high water, they're even more restrictive. So only small boats may be using the docks. When the water goes down, there's also the issues of debris in the river. The seller has a guaranteed amount of five thousand dollars for the city to pay out, whether we get it or not. Do we have a grant for that? Overall, the cost is too high, even with grants. If we get them, and the grants will not cover all the costs. More boat slips are a great idea. Let's encourage individuals and companies to provide them. We, as a city, do not need to add Marina into the city's liability, the city's budget, and additional work for employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Roward. Anyone else?
Yes, Madam Mayor?
Go ahead.
Bob Klingler, Contra Ville, Michigan, St. Clair County. I believe Marine City, Michigan, is the only city in the United States called Marine City. It's fortunate to have two rivers. The big river is beautiful and it supports parks. It does not really support boating in a small sense, small watercraft. I am in favor, and we have done a lot of research on, on growth in the city as far as transient, and we have basically eight miles to the north and eight miles to the south, plus two miles around the south end of Algonac. So we are in a perfect location. It's, it's in my mind and through other committees that I'm on, the right thing to do, and I'm, I'm all for investing in the small first portion, as I would believe be appropriate. The river, the Bell River, is already the home of condominiums, which are private, and the choice of having people come up as transients from other cities in the, in the Lake St. Clair and St. Clair River area is, is a very solid idea. And as far as money goes, and looking down the road, I believe, I believe we've been in the news cycle, there is going to be, and there is a lot of infrastructure money out there developed. That's gonna be coming, and as, as Don said when he was Commissioner, Police, and Mayor, we have water and we have sewer to worry about. Also, at that point, I believe we, we would be amiss if we didn't start to develop Marine City as a public Marina. Thank you for listening, and I appreciate, I appreciate any response that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klingler.
Hey, Cheryl? It's Jeff Bohm here with Dave Van den Bosch. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, I, we just got out of our meeting, so I'm sitting in the front seat of my truck as we speak. Just calling to, obviously, the Marine City Marina projects come front and center, you guys are going to be voting on that this evening to, you know, possibly, cross fund grant request for April first. I think some of the comments about Marina, now, I live in East China, but I'm a St. Clair kid originally, graduated high school there. If you talk to the people in St. Clair and the city council, arguably, the largest asset that we have in St. Clair for tourism is that Marina, okay? And I think many of you are familiar with the Marina in St. Clair if you're a boater. I am an avid boater, and truthfully, I do not come to Marine City because I do not have anywhere to pull my boat in, dock, go down to enjoy your downtown. You've got a great downtown, great restaurant, all the things that you've got going, with your theater, so on and so forth, but if you ask me, and I'm involved in a lot of regional stuff, the Marina piece of it is the missing component for Marine City. So I see this as a first step in the right direction. You know, there's, it's kind of a stepped approach, phase one, phase two, maybe some big time put together recently, and I know Dan Casey might be on the call this evening. We just went through our regional planning session last week on Friday. There were seventy-five participants, which I'm the coach here, called Blue Meets Green. Projects get submitted, they get vetted, they get vetted by people from all over the county, non-political, we keep politics out of the room, and the Marine City Marina project scored out number one in the region. And actually, one of your biggest advocates was the City of Manager, James Frieden, poured here for the particular project. Just to put more emphasis on boating, it brings more people to the area, you know, the spin-over business, that kind of stuff. Lastly, we briefly talked at our meeting tonight, I know some of the concerns about some of the costs, you know, with this project. Don't think you're gonna go it alone on this. We had a lengthy conversation, I won't even say lengthy because of Commissioners, they,
Oh, Jeff, you just cut out.
Jeff, you may have accidentally muted yourself.
Yeah, I, no, my phone just rang, so it instantly, so I apologize. So let's go back to the Blue Meets Green, so that scored out number one. The county, I'm not gonna give you a hundred percent, but I'm gonna give you a ninety-eight percenter that there's gonna be some assistance. Dave and I actually have meetings tomorrow with some local foundations for additional support. There's some different things that we can have, so on this one, I can assure you, you have full county support to help move this project forward and help to bridge any gaps that may be in the financials. Thank you. Dave, you wanna say anything? I'm sorry.
You know, I think Jeff took care of everything, and like I said, we're working on different streams of income to help offset that, the local match for you. So I mean, there's, there's definitely things we're working on at the county level to help that out.
Okay, we appreciate all that. Those are our St. Clair County Commissioners, Jeff Bohm and Dave Van den Bosch. Anyone else?
Madam Mayor, it's Laura Scotty here.
Yep, go ahead.
I have prepared something to, to present or to offer, but I was actually waiting for public hearings, so, until that portion opened up. So if you would like me to do that now, I can. If not, I will, I would like to share that at that time. If not, I would like to share that at that time.
Yeah, we're going to be going into public hearing. We just kind of jumped the gun a little bit.
Perfect.
Whatever you'd like to do. If you don't want to wait, we're going to do that in just a little bit.
Okay, I will wait. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Madam Mayor, this is Dan Casey with the Economic Development Alliance.
Hi, Mr. Casey.
Hi, it's good to be in front of council tonight. I just wanted to kind of reiterate one point that Jeff Bohm made a minute ago about Blue Meets Green. So this is the countywide strategic plan. And we go through this process to update this plan every two years. And it's really unique in the state of Michigan in terms of the way we go about doing it. And one of the benefits of getting a project on the list is that all of the various stakeholders in the county rally around that project to help make it happen. And so, you know, I appreciate what the county commissioner said tonight about bringing some financial resources together. The community foundation, the EDA, and some of our other partners will all be helping you through this project to try to make it a reality. So I just wanted to make that comment today and certainly put out an olive branch. And if there's anything we can do to help, well, we'd love to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Anyone else? Okay, moving on. I need a motion to approve the city commission meeting minutes of March 4, 2021. Any discussions or changes? All right, I need a motion.
This is Jake. I'll make a motion. We approve the city commission minutes.
We have a motion and support roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen. Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And the consent agenda, we have departmental activity reports, the Marine City Area Fire Authority run report, Community and Economic Development Board meeting minutes of January 27, 2021, and the resignation letter from Steve McConnell from the MCAFA. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Commissioner Callahan, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through D as presented.
Jake, support.
We have a motion and support roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen. Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to financial business. Expenditures, including payroll, for $243,867.42. Need a motion to approve expenditures. Any questions about anything? No questions, I need a motion.
This is Commissioner Kreidler. I move to accept the expenses, expenditures, $243,867.42.
Jake, support.
We have a motion and support roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, now we're moving on to public comment. Notice was given that the city commission will conduct a public hearing to receive public comment on the Michigan National Resources Grant Application for 610 South Main Street and the vacant adjacent property. The public hearing has been declared open at 7:52?
7:40.
7:47, 7:47, sorry, I looked at the wrong clock. 7:47 PM. Anyone from the public may now speak. Please limit your comments to five minutes. And of course, all those people that have already spoken, their comments were duly noted. So I'm going to open it back up again.
Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to ask, on a public hearing, can time limits be imposed? I'm not sure if they can or not. Because in the past public hearings, I don't think there's been time limits on them.
We put a time limit of five minutes.
Okay. All right, I guess I just want to speak a little bit on this public hearing, too.
You want to say your name again, please, just for the record?
I understand that we're getting a grant to help do this, but my concern is, one, if we buy the property that has the house, having to tear down the house and do all the demolition of the house at the city's expense. Then if you put the Marina up, the city's stuck with the maintenance cost, the cost of keeping it running, keeping it safe, keeping it operational. It's not just you buy it and put it in. There's going to be costs associated within the future. And once again, I'll steer it back, you know, to the budgets, especially with COVID. Do we know what our budget looks like in the city? What are we getting from the state of Michigan to help support our budget? And all those things need to be taken into account whether or not we can really afford this in the long term. I don't see why we couldn't just let someone buy the property, if that's what they want to do with it, look into all the aspects and let them put it in. At least we're getting the tax revenue. We buy the thing, you're not generating any tax revenue off that land or that property. So I don't think it's a good idea to go forward with this. I think it's something the city can't afford, especially, you know, once again, increases in water bills, water bill deficit, infrastructure, all that stuff. We really need to look at our own city in the sense of those items first before we start purchasing additional properties and installing additional things. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public hearing, public comment?
I'll go ahead.
Rosalie, you had something?
Yes. Well, my concern is this. Since my husband and I moved here almost 26 years ago, we have lost house after house after house for parks and various things. Like when I first moved here, there was a house next to the lawyer's office. When I first moved here where the pavilion is now, there was two houses, three houses there. Yeah, three houses there, where the beach is in that house we bought in front. So we keep taking all these houses down, which that's very nice that we have that there. I like it, I appreciate it, I enjoy it. But every time we've done that, we've taken on the burden of maintaining it, and we've also taken on the fact that we lost a lot of, I mean, lakefront property, you lose a lot of tax revenue from that. So we lost all those already. Then when, you know, we put up an amphitheater, that was another place that there was a house. When I first moved here next to the chiropractor's office, can't remember what it was, but there was a house there, too. So we've taken out a lot of houses to enhance our waterfront. It's like, how can we keep doing this without anything coming in? We're putting more of a burden on something that we have to maintain, and we're getting, and on top of that, we're losing our tax revenue. So now we're going to take on something else again that we have to maintain, and we're losing tax revenue again. And right now, I mean, there hasn't been a lifeguard. There used to be a lifeguard for years when I moved, even before I moved here, there were lifeguards. We can't even afford a lifeguard. So how are we going to take care of this Marina? That's just my concern, and that's just how I feel about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public hearing, public comment?
Madam Mayor, Laura Scott here.
Thank you, Laura.
I'm here to talk tonight as the Chair of the Community and Economic Development Board. The CEDB has been working on proposing a Marina since the group's inception, and a committee was formed called the Marine City Marina Commission. With the aid of stakeholders, volunteers, and two of our county commissioners, Jeff Bohm and Dave Van den Bosch, we are able to bring the idea of a Marina district to life. Recent outside investment in Bell River properties have made this the perfect time for the city to add transient docking. As Dan Casey and Jeff Bohm both mentioned, this project was recently presented to the Economic Development Administration's Blue Meets Green and received the most votes from a panel of stakeholders in our region. This means that Blue Meets Green deems this project a regional strategic priority. This is huge. As we all know, the loss of the Blue Water Ferry in 2018 brought a significant impact on our local and regional economy. Losing this international border crossing, which shaped our area for over 40 years, has left a void. The addition of a Marine City Marina would aid in filling this void by bringing additional visitors here via the river. Offering tourists another port to visit along the St. Clair River will also attract a younger demographic, a key component in growing an area. It also opens up the prospect for people to invest in our city. Attracting investors is key in order to grow this community. This project would open up the opportunity for other businesses to expand and develop along the river. Several businesses along Bell River are expanding their operations by adding fuel stops, pump-out facilities, convenience store, charter fishing, and bait and tackle shops. In addition, a shuttle service, kayak and paddleboard rentals, and bike and golf cart rentals are just a few examples that entrepreneurs that have already inquired about starting businesses here in Marine City. Expanded boat traffic would help benefit the local business community through increased tourism. The increased tourism would in turn cause increased business. This ripple effect will require the businesses to offer additional employment opportunities to people in the region, once again affecting us regionally. This is especially true along the Nautico Mile District, which extends from the Bell River by the aggregate yard to the bridge on Broadway. This district includes approximately 69 properties that pay over $300,000 in taxes annually to the city. This is substantial. Having a Marina district will put the Marine back in Marine City. It will help attract new residents, increase the tax base, increase businesses and tourism here. And I speak for many in saying that we support this investment in Marine City and moving forward with the purchase of the Katron properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just advise some of the people that are listening? I just heard a comment while Laura was talking. Please try to mute yourself while someone else is speaking. Does anyone else have public comment for the public hearing?
Hey, Sheryl, it's Jeff Bohm here and Dave Van den Bosch again.
Yeah, thank you.
Going forward this evening. And I know Brian from Six Rivers is on here. One of the other things that we talked about was maybe looking at getting an appraisal sooner than later. Because how this particular process works, you submit a grant, April 1st, you have to go through the DNR trust fund process. December, April, and the award would be you are to have an appraisal completed by someone who has been authorized by the DNR trust fund. I think that would be prudent to probably do that on the front end because in the purchase agreement, and there again, Brian's on the call, there's a 90-day due diligence on this particular piece. You get the appraisal, come back, you're going to know, you know, if you're within the parameters of really moving forward, making this reality. Step two then would be whenever, you know, municipalities, township, cities accumulate properties. There would be a phase one component, potentially a little bit more. The county does have a brownfield authority. We do have some funds to assist with that. Almost like the demo, you guys talked about the demo of the house earlier. That's one of the things where the county can contribute. The county owns the landfill. We have abilities to help with demolition costs, you know, those types of things. But I think getting an appraisal sooner than later, instead of waiting for that period of time to, you know, just from the first perspective, from the city's perspective, to make sure that this thing is, it's just the next step and make sure that this thing is going to be able to happen. Just that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, thank you, and good evening, everybody. It's great to be back again with everyone. I agree with Jeff on that. I think the appraisals are very important, and it kind of helps set the stage and helps put us on an equal playing field. And we want to be at a point where everybody's in agreement. So when it gets down to line, things work smoothly. So I want to agree with that. And also, you know, on behalf of Six Rivers Land Conservancy, we want to support this grant application. Of course, it has to do with creating water access and connecting to all the places that we love. And this is a great project that would do just that. So we offer our support as well, and thank you. And our executive director, Chris Bunch, is here this evening, too. He may want to add a comment or two as well.
And just could you state your name for the record?
That's exactly what I was going to say. Thank you, Brian.
That was Brian Marzoff, Land Protection Manager with Six Rivers Land Conservancy.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thanks very much.
Yes.
Any other comment?
Sure, this is Chris Bunch. I'm the executive director of Six Rivers, and I appreciate the opportunity to be working with you guys and to share some thoughts on this tonight. I certainly want to come in, reiterating and supporting everything that everybody said about how important this project is for Marine City. As a long time, as a Michigan native and someone who lived for a long period of time in a port community in Michigan and who now spends a fair amount of time in Marine City, water access is critical. And it's a great, a great opportunity that's long overdue for Marine City. But where I really want to spend a minute is talking about the project itself and the process itself. This is the, I guess I'm losing track now. It's the third or fourth project we've done with St. Clair County, and it's one of many of these types of projects we've done for other communities, including Chesterfield Township over in Macomb County, Oakland Township in Oakland County, Casco Township up in St. Clair County. So we've done a number of these types of projects before. And the beauty in it is that the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund, assuming that you're successful in receiving the grant, they'll pay 75% of the purchase price of the property. And as Commissioner Bohm, Chairman Bohm has indicated, the county is willing to help out with that. And they have been very good in all of the other projects we've worked on in St. Clair County. They've brought a lot of resources to the table. He's as good as his word. He means what he says. I think you can rely on the commitment of, certainly heard that it stretches, the interest stretches far and wide in the county. And I think this is a project that is going to get a lot of attention and a lot of support at the state level when we get the application in. And so, you know, we're really excited to be working with you guys. We think it's a great project, and we're particularly interested in the long view. We think this is a great first step and, you know, would hope to see some addition to the opportunity for people to get in there and, you know, park their boats as transient boaters and enjoy Marine City. And I'll just conclude by saying that only condition that we made, and the one thing that I would be concerned about as this goes forward, the only condition we made in supporting you guys in this process was that all meetings would be held on Tuesdays so that I could so that I could go to Marine City Fish on All You Can Eat Perch Day. And, you know, you get too many transient boaters in there blocking things up and putting a line out in front of Marine City Fish, I'm going to be a little, but we think this is a great project and we're really excited to be helping. So thanks for, thanks for the commitment to this.
Thank you, Chris Bunch from Six Rivers. Anyone else for a public hearing, public comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Todd May here.
I'm sorry, say that one more time, there was two people talking.
Madam Mayor, this is Todd May from the Sweet Tooth.
Hi, Mr. May.
As many of you know, I have been open for 11 years now. And when I opened 11 years ago, most people thought I was crazy as a loon to open a candy store downtown Marine City when there was nothing happening at all. Myself and the Marine City Fish Company took a huge risk on developing our businesses downtown. And we've succeeded. And many businesses followed in our footsteps. So we know that the development of Marine City is a very vital part of what we're trying to do to attract different tourism here. And a marina would sure help the whole situation out also. There may not be as many slips as what St. Clair has and what Port Huron has, but it's a start for our city. And just to put out there, because of COVID last year, we'd lost over 26 tour groups coming from the downriver area. I have currently booked now five tour groups starting in July to start coming back to Marine City to shop the city, to discover Marine City from Livonia area and everything else. So I'm working hand in hand with Bianco Tours to get more tourism into Marine City itself. By knowing that some of these people have boats and they live downriver, they would surely come up for a weekend and stay here in Marine City. They could park right in the marina. They could visit the hotel. They can shop. They can dine. It's what they want to do. So by moving forward with a project that would only enhance Marine City, I fully support as a business owner in this town. Because it's not only going to impact us, it will impact V G's grocery store. It will impact the party stores. It will impact everybody on Parker Street along with the downtown area. Because where the marina is proposed to go, it is a good walking distance to other things also. And with the shuttle service, bicycles, kayaks, I just think that it's a very positive thing for the city. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. May. Anyone else for a public hearing, public comment?
Hello?
Yes, go ahead. I think whoever's, go ahead.
This is John Sapienza, Marine City, 1264.
Hi, Mr. Sapienza, go ahead.
I just want to say how excited I am about this marina project. I think that's one of the best things I've heard in a long time. And anything I can do to help, I think it's just wonderful. And that's all, that's all he had to say.
Thank you, Mr. Sapienza. Anyone else for public hearing, public comment? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing at 8:06 PM. And I'm going to advise everyone again to please, if you're not speaking, hit your mute buttons on your phone. And we're going to continue on with the city meeting.
If I may interject, to mute, if you are dialed in by phone, you hit star and then six. That will toggle muting on and muting off. Again, star and then six. Thanks.
Thank you. We don't have any unfinished business, so we're moving on to new business. And we're going to go right into the Michigan National, I'm sorry, the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant Application. Elaine?
Thanks, Carol. I would just like to let everyone know that we did receive this information really today. So that is something that I just wanted to make sure that people were aware of. I'm not sure if everyone on the board had an opportunity to check their email. We did also post this online. I took a look at the application and fortunately, it really is not something that requires a lot of time to go through the detail of the application. The bulk of the information is really in the narrative, which was provided earlier in the week and posted online as well. I think it took me maybe five minutes to actually go through the application that was emailed out today. We do have obviously representatives from Six Rivers who are the ones that worked on writing this application. And what we are looking for at this point is a resolution, or I'm sorry, a vote of support to approve the application for applying for this marina through the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund. Chris Bunch and Brian Marzoff are both online if you have any questions regarding the application as well.
Brian or Chris, would you do me a favor, please? Since the grant application was just received, you guys are the pros, certainly not us. I'm sure that we will listen to your advice. If you could give us the Reader's Digest condensed version of the grant application, we would appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, I can help you with that. So the acquisition, just so we have it on record, includes just shy of a half acre of property. It's about 160 lineal feet of riverfront property on the Bell River, right at South Main Street and Bridge Street, right near the downtown area. This acquisition will allow for future development of that long-awaited arena, of marina that we've been talking about with accessible amenities, creating that new place and opportunities in Marine City. The grant application itself, as Elaine said, has a lot of information in it. Most of it is in the narrative. And the narrative is where you really got to score your points. Some of the highlights of the application are that it creates new water access, which is a trust fund board priority. So I think you're going to score some extra points there. It aligns perfectly with many of the other regional and state plans for this type of activity. So again, scoring more points there. So I think we give it an excellent opportunity to get funded. The numbers for the grant application, $371,000 is the total project cost. 74% of that would be $274,000. That would be the grant request with a local match of $97,000, which is 26%. So the minimum match is 25%. But if you go up that 1%, you're going to score at least 10, maybe 15 points. So it's really worth it to do that. We highly recommend it. The application deadline is April 1st, as was mentioned. We will hear in December on the status of the application, if it's going to be recommended for funding or not. And again, we're happy to be working on this with you, with Marine City. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. And again, Chris Bunch is here with me as well.
Thank you.
Again, before you, is the resolution, it just needs to be considered and approved.
Correct. Any discussion?
Yeah, this is Bill Clausen. I've got a question on this. I guess the question would be, part of it is because of, we didn't receive all this information until 3:27 one, the time this afternoon, and 3:19. And this stuff isn't here. And I would like to make a motion to table this until we have a chance to give over the information and everything. We all work.
Yeah, I'm well aware of that. That's why I asked them to do the explanation for the grant. We're not the experts on the grant, so they are.
I might, I mean, you know.
Does anybody have any other, we have a motion, but does anybody else have any questions?
You have to go on the motion.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, when there's a motion to table, the motion to table takes precedent over the underlying issue for the moment. I didn't hear a second for the motion to table. But once there's a motion to table and a second, there's no debate on the other issue anymore. There's only discussion about whether or not to table.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll second his motion.
Okay, so now you have a motion to table and a second. The commissioners are free to debate the merits of tabling it.
Hi, go ahead, go ahead, Jake.
Hey, I have a, now, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're on a really tight deadline for getting this grant application in and having all of our ducks in a row.
That's correct.
So I don't think we can afford to wait two more weeks else we miss out on this opportunity.
That's correct.
I don't think we'll miss out on that opportunity. I think we have to have time to review all the information that we get. And we've been getting the information on this very late. And we started pushing from day one. We need it tomorrow. And doesn't give us time to review the whole item.
But that's also why we have two representatives here to answer any questions and to explain everything for us.
But the problem, this is Commissioner Hendrick. The problem also is, is that the information wasn't readily available for the public before the public hearing. We didn't get this till late this afternoon. I had to go through it also. But I think it was, it's very important to include the public in this. And when they can't get this stuff till late like us, it makes it harder for them to comment at a public hearing. I mean, we moved the meeting. We moved everything around. And then we get this stuff at four. I got mine, I think, I didn't get it till about four in the afternoon. So it's, it makes it tough.
Anyone else?
Attorney Davis here. I'd like to remind everyone that you already have voted to expend the $3,000 for the grant application. It's my understanding the grant application is due honor before April 1st.
Yes.
I am working with the fine folks on the language of the underlying agreements, and that's moving along, just making sure we're documenting all the off-ramps that were discussed, you know, the, you know, the time periods when the city can still get out of this and what would be those ramifications. We're still working on those, that language. But you did already vote to pay the money, the 1,500 plus the other 1,500. If you're going to, if you're going to table this, I would strongly recommend that you set it for a special meeting at a minimum, or try to deal with it this evening. Or I think the grant writers are going to tell you, if it's not in by April 1st, you're out a year. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Bunch?
Yes, that's, that's exactly correct. You could, you know, if you, if you table this, you will need to have a special meeting to bring it back and pass the resolution. If you don't pass the resolution, you don't get to submit the grant. If you don't submit the grant by April 1st, then you, you have to wait until April 1st of 2022 to do this.
Okay, so I'm not casting any opinion on what should be done here. I just want to make sure everybody understands that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I personally feel that time is of the essence. We have two representatives from Six Rivers Conservancy here that are explaining the application. They are the professionals, we are not. And if there are any questions, we certainly have many members of the public still on the line and I think that we just, we just need to, we just need to move forward. We have two weeks until April 1st, two weeks from today.
All right, so we, we should, we should keep our, keep our focus on the motion to table, which I know you are. And at some point, you need to vote on the motion to table.
I'll call for the question. I didn't hear that, I'm sorry. I'm calling, vote. Okay, so we have a, we have a motion and a second to table the grant application. I need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ross?
No.
Mayor Verkaman?
No.
Commissioner Bryson?
No.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yep.
Commissioner Callahan?
No.
Commissioner Clausen? Was that a yes, Bill?
I'm against it, so.
Your voting.
I want to table, yes.
Okay, yes, okay. Commissioner Kreidler, just want to make sure.
I didn't understand that either.
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, so the motion to table has failed. You're back to the substantive issue at this point.
Okay, does anybody have any more questions regarding the trust fund grant application?
Yes. All right, this is Commissioner Hendrick. And like usual, I've got a load here. So first, I want to say I know the people of the property. They're very good people. And all my opinions and that are strictly business. But I have to say that the last time I couldn't vote for this project due to the absence of a clear proposal on how this is going to work out, which wasn't available until sort of at 4 o'clock today. This is taking two properties off the tax roll without determining how we're going to recoup the lost revenue. Now we will be adding upkeep, grass cutting, insurance, demolition, possible bathrooms. So I want to know how we're going to pay for all this stuff when we even have trouble keeping our own beach going. I'm not sure why everybody calls this a marina. It's seven transient boat slips. But I did read in the proposal, which I'll get to, I think we should only be purchasing the vacant lot with the seven boat slips instead of adding the large house that would have cut costs for the taxpayers because we have to pay the money to remove. The cost of the house property is the problem for me. So then, the other problem is certain boats will not have access to this due to the bridge, depending on water depths and the obstructions in the water, which there are many on that side of the bridge. It says in the narrative that this property makes an ideal candidate for acquisition at this time as a first step in a larger vision. So I guess I'm not sure how we're going to do that. So how many houses and properties does the city plan to buy and remove? I mean, it makes no sense whatsoever. We're never going to have a marina such as the likes of St. Clair and Elginak and Ira Township who have large, large marinas. We're going to have transient boating. Okay, so I think we need to bring this really into perspective. Another issue I saw in the application is there was no soil boring test done on the property, which that could create another problem. If soil boring isn't done, especially I think it's required on commercial property, that'll tell us whether there's any contaminants in the soil there, which could create another problem. We have two private marinas, which, you know, they'll, they'll do a lot of the work for the community, plus we get the tax out of it. The master plan doesn't even show these properties as part of the marina plan. The new master plan shows the county stone yard and two private marinas as the waterfront. And the county's never going to give up the stone yard. I think that's another thing that we need to agree with. So one of the problems I have is we haven't reevaluated our budget yet to see what's going to happen. We don't want to overextend the city on too many projects that we can't afford. After looking through this part here, in your narrative, it says, "The lack of a public marina in this area has hindered economic growth in the Marine City downtown area where many businesses and recreation opportunities have missed over the years." I'm kind of not seeing that. I mean, only because of COVID have things slowed down. But before that, you couldn't find a place to park downtown. And it wasn't because necessarily of us not having a marina. Then it says, "The property makes an ideal candidate for acquisition at this time for a first step in a larger vision." I guess I need to know, what's the larger vision to expand this? There's a question. One question. Can you answer that?
Who you're directing the question to? Who are you directing the question to?
I guess one of our experts.
Madam Mayor, uh, if I may, this is, uh, Chris Bunch from Six Rivers. So, uh, um, and I have been, uh, Brian Marzal, who is our land protection manager. We've sort of, uh, divi- been in the divide and conquer mode here because this is a pretty big task. So Brian has been focused on the, uh, grant language and I've been working with, uh, the city and the seller on, uh, uh, the components of the acquisition. But let me, let me see if I can take on some of the, uh, uh, questions that were, uh, raised, uh, here. You know, sort of following the lead and the instruction of the folks we're working with in the city and the, uh, uh, the interest in the house has been, and I think, uh, 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 one of the things we provided was a sketch. It's a rough sketch because we haven't had time to do the, uh, nice app yet. But, uh, we provided a rough sketch that shows parking, uh, coming in off of, uh, what is that, Marine Street there?
Yes, that's Marine Street, yep.
Yep, so, you know, the purpose in buying the house, uh, is that it's going to provide you, uh, vehicular access off of the main drag, much safer to get, uh, in and out of the property with. Uh, and, uh, you know, certainly there will be some cost in removing the house. One of the commitments that, uh, Mr. Bohm and the county has made is that they will, uh, they will provide some assistance with that. Uh, a- as people have noted, this is, uh, uh, moving relatively quickly at this moment because we have a grant deadline and we're concentrating all our, uh, energy on taking care of the piece that's in front of us right now. But the, uh, as, as we've said, and if you look at the track record, uh, the county has done what they said they're gonna do and the other projects we're working on. They've been, uh, uh, very committed and very helpful, so I think, uh, you can count on them doing what they said they're gonna do. So, uh, part of the reason for the house is that it's an important piece of this, uh, larger project. Uh, in terms of getting to the discussion of, uh, the environmental conditions on the property, specifically the soil borings, uh, that will be addressed during the due diligence portion of the, uh, purchase agreement for the property. And you heard Mr. Bohm talk a little bit about that. The appraisal, uh, also happens during the due diligence portion, uh, of, of, uh, that part of the contract. So once we get a purchase agreement in place, we will launch, uh, an appraisal. We will launch an environmental assessment, uh, and the other typical steps in the due diligence process, including title search and so forth. Uh, and, and during that due diligence period, if, if things come back unsatisfactory, then you have the ability to, uh, back out of, uh, the purchase contract. It gives you, that due diligence window gives you the opportunity to negotiate a little more or to simply walk away from the contract, uh, and, and get your, uh, earnest money back. So it will be very important for us to stay focused during the due diligence period on getting that stuff completed, uh, so that we can, uh, understand, uh, whether or not, uh, that part of it is gonna move forward. Part of the reason that we're doing these things in concert, that we're doing the acquisition steps uh, in concert with doing the grant application, is that the sellers, uh, you know, have the house on the market, uh, and they're interested in having a solid commitment that it's going to be sold or they're gonna keep it on the market. And so the commitment that we've made is that, uh, uh, you know, assuming that the city is, is on board with submitting the grant application and wants to go forward with this, then we will work, uh, expeditiously to resolve the questions and get the, the the solid commitment to the purchase of the home so that they'll know that that's gonna take place. Assuming that that takes place, they've agreed to, to, uh, uh, option to be vacant property to, to us so that that will be part of the larger deal. So we can tie up, uh, uh, all of the property, uh, and it will be held until the grant money comes through and, uh, we can then, uh, acquire it. But we need to be doing these things in concert and within the context of, uh, uh, the typical contract, uh, periods, we have the ability to address some of the concerns that have been raised. Uh, and, you know, the last thing that I'll, uh, respond to very briefly because I'm not, uh, uh, really qualified to that is to talk about the larger vision of a marina district. And in some of the conversations that we've had with the, uh, Chamber of Commerce and the Downtown Development folks and, and, uh, and the county has talked a little bit of it with us about it as well. You know, we've seen a vision that says that there would be some more, uh, public, uh, transient and marina space, uh, along the course of the Bell River coming in off of the, uh, uh, the St. Clair River. But it's gonna take time to assemble all of that, and the object here is that this is the first step. It's a good step, uh, and it's a, it's a small first step, and so, you know, you're, you're easing into this. And so we think that's a good way to go about it, rather than trying to assemble a giant package that is gonna take significantly more time and effort just to get it to a place where you could do something with it. Let's, uh, you know, w- we're following the old adage, how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. So, uh, we think this is a good approach and, and we're happy to be a part of it.
Okay, I still have some, I still have more questions.
Just one quick one, Rita, I didn't mean to cut you off, but this, this, this part, this was brought to us, boy. Um, Dave pitches when he was a mayor, how many years ago, Dave? Uh, probably six years ago. Um, so just to say that this hasn't been in larger conversations, larger discussions on a larger county strategic thing, that's not the case whatsoever. So, um, obviously recently this has expedited itself and moved, uh, forward. And, you know, at the end of the day, we finally got the people that were able to move it sitting at the table and, you know, uh, able to put this together. But this just didn't pop up on the radar screen overnight. So, uh, I, I, I appreciate your time and I just want to add that, please.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else?
Um, I wasn't finished.
Go ahead.
I'm still not finished. I was just waiting for him to answer the one question. I still have more on this, um.
Go ahead.
This part. Okay, so it says in your, um, app, your narrative that the conceptual plan also includes a parking area, which I saw, um, for marina use, accessible walking paths, shade trees, picnic tables, remaining green space, a charging station for cell phones. Um, added as a convenience and safety feature for boaters and future restrooms. I mean, all that's gonna take time and I understand that. But then I get farther in here. And let me see if I can find the page. So then I find the page. Here, one of two in the project details, the state equalized value versus the estimated appraisal value. Um, the vacant part is estimated, the state equalized value 37.5 and the estimated appraisal is 200,000. The house is 79.5, that's state equalized, versus appraised value 129. And then there's a market value waterfront adjustment of 26.3. Um, the demolition costs are not included in this particular thing, and I appreciate that the county wants to, um, give us money for it, but unless I see something in writing, I'm one of those people that likes to see it in writing. Then I went on to another page of your part. It says, um, did you gather public input from individuals, disabilities, or families or advocates? It says no. Um, it says, how are you gonna communicate with the residents, which I'm kinda wondering, I think the residents know this. It's, how are you gonna communicate with the outside world that we have this? I guess that's the question. Then you have another thing on here that says, do you know or do you intend to, in the future, to charge an entrance fee for this project? And it says no. So I'm assuming that the somebody from the city has already made the determination, we will not charge for this boating, anybody to dock here. Is that true or false? Mr. Bunch?
Okay, ma- madam mayor, if I, if I could, uh, uh, touch on a couple of those.
Okay, go ahead, Brian.
We, I think it's important to keep in mind that that concept plan is just that. It's very conceptual. And, uh, it, it's gonna take some time to iron that out and with a lot of, uh, community input and listening to everybody, you know, you'll come up with the, the plan that's gonna fit it just right for your community. So that's something that the, you know, the trust fund wants is just have an idea of what will be there. So it, it, it is just exactly that, a concept right now. So it can change. That is not written in stone. So I wanted to make that clear. Um, the SEV question, again, the appraisal is gonna, uh, will spell that out when we have that done, so that'll help answer those questions. Um, in terms of the entrance fees, um, the DNR, uh, the trust fund likes to see no entrance fees. I think you, uh, you get points if you don't charge. So, um, we kept it, uh, that was my understanding was the way it was gonna be there, so that's why that one is, is checked off in that way. I hope that helps answer some of those questions.
Um, yes, it does. It just creates more, more issues for me about how are we gonna maintain and do all this. Um, we're only gonna gain seven boat slips, and I understand that there was a, an original proposal to buy another piece along the river and that fell through due to, um, uh, high cost. So then this property came along, and that's fine. I'm just trying to make sure that I cover all these things because, you know, people ask me, um, I read through these, uh, this narrative and this application, and when I see those things checked, that's why I gotta make sure that these things are brought up so that the public understands the entire, um, proposal. So it's not just for my benefit. This is also for the benefit of the people out there that are listening so that they know what we're doing with this particular property and, and what the intent is. Now I looked at the rendering. Um, I'm kinda confused that we didn't have any sidewalk going out to the road, but we do have an entrance there and still think that, you know, you could have done this with the vacant piece and you still could have had the whole thing done in a nice, little bit more economical fashion. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Ross. I just had a question regarding the, uh, you know, charging for entrance. So it would be obvious that, uh, passersby wouldn't be charged any entrance fee whatsoever to enter the property. But would there be, as a potential future item, uh, the ability to charge, say, for overnight transient dockage or something along these lines?
That's a really good question. I have to get some clarification from the DNR on that one, but I, I know that they, uh, they favor not charging, um, with these, uh, trust fund projects.
Okay.
And, uh, a- and this is Chris Bunch, and I just, uh, uh, I would suggest that, uh, you know, I, I'm certain there's opportunity to discuss this further and make some adjustments to the approach. Uh, we get the grant in, uh, in, in October. Uh, they do a preliminary scoring and then in October you have an opportunity to make, uh, adjustments, uh, to your grant. Typically the adjustments that you make, you're trying to increase your score. It's certainly possible that we could go back and say, you know, we've changed our mind, we, we are gonna charge, uh, uh, dockage fees or day fees. Um, but I think, uh, uh, you know, the other things that you have to consider are, uh, if you're gonna do that, you gotta put some kind of mechanism in place to do that. And, and our understanding, what we've been led to believe at this point in, in, in time is that the intention for this is that it's basically, uh, transient boater access coming in, uh, off the river for visitors to, uh, uh, to the city. And, um, you know, there wasn't really, uh, an intent for it to be, uh, for this site itself to be a revenue generating, uh, mechanism, that its object was to bring people in that were gonna spend money and boost the economy and, uh, enjoy the, uh, the town itself. So certainly there's some time and some capacity to revisit the question of, of, uh, uh, whether or not you're gonna charge fees for it. But I think our, our object at the front end of this, uh, is to put together the most attractive, uh, application that we can. And, uh, Brian's heard me say that, uh, many a time in our office, our number one object is get the land. Once you've got it, you've got forever to figure out what to do with it. But, uh, in this, in, in, in these circumstances, this property is on the market, uh, and we know the market is, uh, moving quite a bit right now. People are, uh, they, they actually were gracious enough to turn down, uh, a showing when we started talking, the, the day that we met, to start talking about this. And, uh, they're holding it in advance for a little bit until we, uh, make a decision here about going forward. So, um.
Understood. Oh, sorry.
Well, the point is that we just, we want to keep this moving to meet the April 1st deadline and to get some resolution on, uh, securing the property, uh, so that we can, uh, get through the other steps to understand if we're passing through the due diligence and, and everything's gonna keep moving forward.
Thank you.
Brief follow-up question, just to clarify something. Would by saying that we don't plan on charging, that mean the city could never charge for a slip there? You know, down the road?
I'll, I'll leave that to Brian. I think he, I think he's right. We're gonna have to get some clarification on that. I know that, uh, uh, you know, trust fund has funded projects both ways, projects that don't charge anything and projects that do. Many of the park districts that we work with have annual pass, you know, annual fees. Metro Park says annual fees, uh, we've done projects with them. Uh, Oakland County Park says annual fees, we've done projects with them. Uh, DNR has fees and DNR gets trust fund dollars, so.
Right. I think you could change it, yeah.
Numerous communities out there that do get fees, uh, but there are also lots and lots of places that, uh, uh, don't charge any kind of fee. So, uh, we were going with the information, uh, that was available to us at the time.
Okay, I guess I'd just like to understand it. Please do follow up on whether or not the applying for the application, having that checked, no, predicates us from ever being able to charge somebody for a slip, even if, say, we improved the area to, you know, include a bathroom or something for a transient boater that they might be able to access, you know?
Absolutely. We'll make sure that happens.
Please do clarify. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Uh, so, uh, I, I voted yes last time on this, and I had some comments to look at. And I voted because Jeff had said that the county would demo that out for it. And that's, I mean, that's the big thing with me is paying, finding, helping them. And so, but it, and I'd like to see something that would be tie-in or would guarantee that the county is gonna tear that down.
So Bill, Jeff Bohm here, I'm still on the call with you. You have the commitment from the county. I am, I am going to the foundation, local foundations tomorrow for additional support. I would just echo, you have a million outs on this deal, okay? So this is clearly getting the application process started. Like I said, I, I don't even want to get into appraisal conversation tonight because that would take us two more hours, but that's another step that you need to get done sooner than later. We have the county's brownfield that can assist with that. This scored out, as I told you earlier, on our Blue Meets Green priority list. I, I, I've been doing this 17 years, 11 years as board chairman. I know Commissioner Van den Bosch, sitting right next to me, he's committed. The county is in full support of this, so whether it's demo, whether it's that, if you give me a little bit of time to go do what we do to assist and raise money, I don't expect you to take that whole $140,000 lift. Personally, if I, if I, if, if I thought that the city could do that and everything else, um, I, I wouldn't, you know, tell you to do it. But, um, if I cannot deliver on county's commitment, some of these other things, you still have multiple off-ramps in this moving forward, so.
Thank you. That is correct. Anyone else?
I got one last question. Commissioner Hendrick. Um, on one of your pages, it says that Motorized Recreational Opportunities, ORV and Snowmobile, and you guys checked it, yes. I guess I'm wondering how that's gonna happen with the seawall.
Uh, that may just be the way it printed out. I, I, I don't, I don't expect, um, that to be occurring, so it, it could just be the way that that printed.
Okay, well, it's checked, yes.
Brian, I would just like to tell you, a million people come into St. Clair, they park at the seawall. They walk up the seawall and they walk into our local bars and restaurants in St. Clair. That's a regular occurrence.
Yeah. Excellent.
Yes, that's correct. I've done it. Anyone else for qu- questions? Okay, I mean, I need a motion to approve this application so we can move on.
And this is Jake. I'll make a motion we approve the grant application.
Support, Brian Ross.
We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
No.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
No, there's too many questions.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to resolution number 005-202- All right, moving on to resolution number zero zero five dash two zero two one, the Bell River Acquisition. Uh, Elaine, you wanna explain briefly?
Uh, this is actually just a companion resolution that is required as part of the grant application.
Any questions? Okay, I need a motion um, to approve this resolution, zero zero five dash two zero two one.
This is Jake. I'll make a motion. We approve resolution number zero zero five dash two zero two one.
Support again Brian Ross.
We have a motion and support roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
No.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
No.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to resolution number zero zero six dash two zero two one, brownfield plan for the Marine City Apartments. Uh, Elaine, you wanna explain?
Sure. Uh, this is a resolution seeking support for a brownfield plan for the property known as the Gex Building that is currently owned by the Vertons. Uh, this is something that they are looking for, I believe it's an eighteen year uh, tax, not, not an abatement, but uh, tax assistance. And um, this is something that we had a previous plan before the board. Uh, I think it was about a year ago. They have since changed the plan. They reduced the timeframe from, I think it was twenty-two years down to eighteen. Uh, the representatives from both the County Brownfield Association and Envirologic, as well as the owner of the property are on the call if anybody has any questions regarding this project.
I don't know what that means. This is Burton. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Burton.
Okay, just to clarify a couple of things. Uh, I have a partner, a fifty percent partner in this project, Chris LaBelle, who's been with me from the beginning. Um, we're looking to build uh, six uh, apartments, rental apartments. Four of them which would be two-bedroom, two of them would be one-bedroom, plus three retail spaces uh, on the ground floor. Apartments are approximately a thousand square foot. Um, we looked at this building with the idea that we needed to get a lot of help to try and bring this building back to life. We had a tour. It, it's in very poor condition. In fact, if this building doesn't get some uh, help pretty soon, it's gonna have to come down. And it's the last thing uh, Main Street needs is another vacant lot. Um, we, uh, this is a tax capture, so we pay for everything. And as the taxes come in, uh, we'll get reimbursed over thirteen years, uh, myself and my partner. We, um, this doesn't cost us any, anything and uh, there, without some tax incentives, this probably won't be developed. I mean, I keep hearing people say, well, somebody else should buy it. Well, um, John looked at it from Anita's and he didn't wanna buy it. Uh, we looked at it, it was for sale, I think, three years before we bought it. Uh, we couldn't get a brownfield pass, so we didn't do anything. Then COVID hit and that got us delayed. So we've had it since two thousand nineteen. Uh, I, I think the downtown area, it'll be a beautiful uh, building to bring uh, more residents, six more families uh, to our community. Uh, again, the taxes will uh, not be less than they are now. And uh, eventually they will, they will go up. So we're asking uh, for uh, this to be uh, passed so we can um, retrofit this building. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Donaldson, are you on the line?
I am. Thank you, Mayor. Um, Jeff Donaldson, I'm the Director of the County's Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. We act on behalf of uh, all municipalities in St. Clair County and the county itself, uh, when a uh, brownfield project presents itself. I think it's important to note though that uh, we work in concert with local units of government and obviously the local unit of government needs to approve anything prior to uh, the Brownfield Authority taking uh, final action on it and taking it to the county board. So that being said, this project, um, it was, as, as Mr. Burton mentioned, he's a fifty-fifty partner with uh, his partner, Mr. LaBelle, and uh, they approached us some time ago, uh, when they looked at this property. Um, because one of the things we can do, we have EPA assessment grants and we can help do some of the due diligence on properties. And we do that all around the county with projects to keep projects moving forward and to encourage people to take it, take, take a leap. And those dollars, uh, when we, those grant, when we have those grant dollars are available to everybody. Anybody can apply. Um, and we advertise them wide, widely that way. And we did some due diligence on this property and, and, and assessed it and at the time, well over a year ago, presented, put together a brownfield plan that would identify, that identified activities are eligible for reimbursement from tax capture. And um, that plan was brought forward. It was discussed with council at the time and with administration. And, and it was asked if there was anything that could be done with that plan, if it could be uh, for lack of a better term, trimmed up a bit from the, from the city's perspective. So we took it back and we, we worked on it. And then as uh, Mr. Burton mentioned, COVID came along and uh, the project sort of got put on the back rails, almost mothballed for a while. Um, but uh, things are starting, starting to move forward. We see that from the economic development perspective all around the county. And they're getting more interested in it. Um, as many people know, the cost of doing um, development is going up all the time. Material costs are going up. So if there's ever a time for them to do it, now is the time and they would like to move forward with it. We brought forth a amended brownfield plan, um, since the one that was introduced well over a year ago. And what we did is when working with the developer and looking at costs, we trimmed down the amount of time that tax would be captured to reimburse for identified eligible expenses in that plan. And it shortened it nearly five years. So it went from uh, twenty-two years and a few months down to eighteen years. The anticipated private investment from the developer has gone up from one point two million to one point five million in the project. And uh, the uh, total reimbursement to the developer and the uh, and the county's uh, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority has gone down a bit and to uh, two hundred and eighty-three thousand over that, that eighteen years. Well, actually thirteen years, the final years of tax capture with brownfield plans, there is, there is money that goes to the state brownfield redevelopment revolving fund and, and the, and the uh, county's brownfield redevelopment revolving fund to continue to assist with these efforts going forward. So one thing I think it's important to reiterate, um, Mr. Burton mentioned it. I, I heard uh, the city manager, um, Ms. Levin mentioned this as well. I, I, it's, I think it's always important to note with brownfield plans, I, somebody threw out the word abatement and it's not an abatement. Um, the developer, in this case, uh, uh, Marine City Apartments LLC and hearing from Mr. Burton, it sounds like that's a fifty-fifty partnership between the, the Vertons and, and Mr. LaBelle. They will continue to pay the taxes and they're currently being paid on this property. The city will continue to get the same amount of taxes that they've been getting all along. If somebody hadn't come along and said, I wanna invest one point five million dollars in the city and, 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 and improve this property. Those taxes will continue to be collected, will continue to go to the city. After that one point five million dollars is invested, there'll be a new assessment on the property. That new assessment will generate a new amount of taxes. That is what gets captured. So if you imagine, here's the level of taxes that's being paid now, that's gonna continue for a period of time. Over the next couple of years, because of investment, there'll be some new increment of taxes that will get captured, that will get paid by the developer, that'll get captured, it'll be getting put into a fund. And on an annual basis, the developer can submit app, uh, receipts and request reimbursement. And we can only pay out how much is captured each year. So that's why it can't be done all at once and it takes a period of thirteen years to generate what is anticipated to be in the, as far as eligible expenses in the brownfield plan. That's, I think, very important thing to note. And then once those are all paid out, then the city realizes uh, a few years out, that new increment of taxes, it just takes a little bit of time before they get that new increment of taxes from the private investment, that one point five million dollars of private investment that's made. It just takes a little bit of time to get to, for that to come back to the city while the eligible expenses are paid to help spur that one point five million dollars of private investment.
Thanks, thank you. That, that, I think that's um, some uh, critical information. Um, because I don't know why brownfield always seems to have a negative connotation, but there is a complete um, tax capture. Nothing goes down. The investment gets made, the property gets uh, developed and the city does not lose any money. We gain money in the future when that developed property, when those taxes come back to the city as a developed property, correct?
That is correct.
That is correct. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Nothing. I, I wanna, that the city has to guarantee the loan. And how much can the city guarantee? We already have one brownfield already that we're guaranteeing for a payback of, I don't know how many years, twenty? And then we got this one for sixteen. And if we wanna go ahead and borrow money, then how does that create what, what we can borrow? Because we got debt against us.
Would you like me to take a shot at that?
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff. Yes, please.
So uh, well, that's a very, that's a very good question, Mr. Clausen. Uh, the Inn on Water Street, I think, project that you referenced, there was a, a loan associated with that. Um, and that is separate from the brownfield tax capture. That loan came into being after uh, the building came down. Um, there was site assessments done in the state of Michigan in the DEQ. Um, actually did some site assessments there back in the eighties. And they actually deemed that site to be clean. So we didn't anticipate too many problems once the foundation and uh, came up. But get, but when the slab came up, if anybody was in downtown Marine City that day, they'll remember because like, you could smell it. Um, there was a heavy petroleum contamination in the soil. The DEQ and the DNR stepped in with both a grant and a loan um, at that time to address the, the cleanup costs of removing those soils. That's where that loan came into being. Um, and that is being, that loan is being uh, repaid by the taxes being paid by the Inn on Water Street uh, each year. They, they pay their taxes, then those get reimbursed to the city and the city uses those taxes to pay down that loan. With this property, with this project, as far as the, the brownfield authority is concerned, there is no loan in place. So the city is not being asked to pledge full faith and credit on any sort of indebtedness on this whatsoever. Um, again, the city will continue to get the taxes they're always getting. There is no loan on this. I know it's a little confusing because it's a brownfield project and the Inn on Water Street had one. But this one does not have that, that sort of loan component. Um, it, it didn't have the environmental situation that the Inn on Water Street had. Because let's face it, that was free, uh, looking back fifty, seventy-five, a hundred years, was an auto dealership and auto service station. And petroleum storage was taking place on site.
Uh, this is Tom. I'd just like to make a point on the Inn on Water Street. We have four apartments that last year paid twenty-eight thousand dollars in taxes. The Inn on Water Street paid twenty-seven thousand dollars in taxes, which is paying the loan back. But if we wouldn't have did that project, we wouldn't have got those condos there. So the city's generating twenty-eight thousand dollars of additional taxes. Tarhoon used to pay nine thousand. So it's always a win-win if we can develop our downtown area. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a great point, Mr. Burton. Anyone else?
Yes. Lisa Hendrick. Mr. Burton, I know you're there. I'm a little confused. When we came to view the building and you showed us plans, you showed us four um, businesses downstairs and seven apartments upstairs. So did that change?
Uh, we, we talked to the city, the planning, the, the building commission, yeah. We decided to scale back the apartments to six instead of seven. We didn't like the garage that came off on to St. Clair Road. We thought that would be very difficult. So we scaled back the number of the apartments. And with that, we, we have now three retail spaces, not four.
Okay, I just wanna clarify.
It's not designed yet, Lisa, so we're still, you know, in, in the process of tweaking. We have to go to the planning commission and so forth uh, with the designs. But we thought it would be a better situation. And we also uh, have seen that there's a real need for two-bedroom dwellings. So by scaling it back with four two-bedroom apartments versus all one-bedroom apartments, we're seeing a bigger demand. Uh, especially at the hotel because we can't accommodate uh, two-bedroom uh, places.
Okay, thank you. I mean, it, it's just confusing because, you know, we heard one thing and we saw another. And, and I guess I would suggest to the county that um, the county needs to update their plan because they're calling only for four apartments in here, but seven garages. And so there's a little bit of word problems in the, in the actual brownfield document. Um.
It, it's been developed over the last two, two and a half years. Uh, so yes, you're absolutely right. We, it, it needs to be, uh, I didn't, I thought we had the brown, but we probably didn't get this last change. And that was really talking to um, uh, the, the building inspector that we kinda saw that as a problem, having that garage coming out on the, on this main street.
Um, now I know construction costs are just going through the roof right now. So what happens to you? The construction costs increase and then it starts becoming more than what the intent of this is on some of these um, things that you need done like demolition and that. How is that gonna be dealt with if they come in a lot higher than what um, they're giving you credit for?
Any, anything that goes above the brownfield is out of my pocket. Not, it's a, brownfield's a fixed price.
Okay, well, that's why I want people to understand, you know, because things are going. Um, I guess the other thing to the county, um, you're gonna have a public hearing on this on April first, which is the same night as our meetings. And yet then, and this is something that does affect our community. Um, and I think the people should be heard and it's kind of a shame that it's on the same night, which makes it difficult for a lot of us, including us to attend. Um, so that's one issue I've got on here. Um, I guess the brownfield, I, I understand how it all works. I've been through it the first time with your other building. Um, I guess people need to understand the, yes, we get the rate of taxes that we're getting today. But the increase when the uh, building is reassessed, that increase goes to pay off the loan. So technically, the increase is what the city loses over the eighteen years or thirteen years for this particular development. Um, but that also affects other people that collect millages, affects the schools, seniors, drug task force and so on. Um, but I know a lot of other people have done the same thing. One thing that had to be done on the other property, we had to create a mini Tifa there. Does the same thing have to be done for this property?
No, this, this is, this is a very, we pay for all the costs and then we, we, the developer gets reimb, we get reimbursed over thirteen years. So there, it's, there's no loan, there's no.
Yeah, I understand that, but we had to create like a mini Tifa district for that other property to create this brownfield and the tax breaks. So I'm just curious if it has to be done for this particular building also. I guess I'm asking the county.
Yeah. I, if, if I may interject, um, we also have on the line this evening, the county's brownfield authority has uh, retained the services of Envirologic and Dave Stegink with Envirologic is with us. They're experts to do this all around the state and I think Dave can speak towards that question and a few others. Dave, I saw your hand up. Um, I, so uh, Mayor, uh, Mayor, if, if I could defer that to Dave.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Dave Stejink?
Yes, good evening, everybody, thank you. I, I guess I'd like to respond to two comments made there, so first of all, regarding the district, no, you don't need to do a district like you do with a Tifa or an Oprah or something like that. Essentially, the Brownfield Plan is the establishment of a property-specific tax increment financing district all by itself, so it, it does not require a separate step.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
The, the other point I think I'd like to answer, it's come up a couple of times this evening, particular to school districts being affected by the plan, I think one thing that is valuable to know is that part of the process of implementing these Brownfield plans is notification to the state of Michigan that we intend to capture school taxes, that capture has to be approved by one of the agencies involved, either Eagle for environmental activities, or the Michigan Strategic Fund for non-environmental activities, their approval of the capture of school taxes automatically allows the state to back-fund the schools for any lost revenue. The schools continue to get their per pupil guaranteed funds from the state, they are not, are not lost by the adoption of a Brownfield Plan, the schools are always made whole.
But the other entities, like any other millages we have, they would lose.
You're, you're correct, your county and your local millages are, are going to defer the benefit of the increased tax value until these eligible activities are paid off, that is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, but Lisa, Lisa, when you, when you say we lose it, it, it's kind of not accurate.
Well, they don't get it.
We just don't gain it, we don't lose anything, we just don't gain it for a period of time.
The people that have the millages don't gain it, it goes towards paying off the, the other debt, the portion, the extra portion.
Right.
Yes.
But, but I, I just, I just like to make, because Brownfield is a, is a, is a, is a creature of pro-development, and it, it serves a good purpose, I just want people to know, you, you, you're just not gaining, you're not losing, but you're, you're postponing your gain in the, in the value of the one point five million dollar private investment, you're postponing your benefit.
Yeah, I guess my, my last question is, in the event something ever happened with the property, say, you know, heaven forbid something happens to whatever, and somebody doesn't own her, do they default on the building, then what happens?
I, I'd like to answer that, if I could.
Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
The developer is only reimbursed from the available taxes that they pay. If, God forbid, something happens to the building, or there's a foreclosure, or there's anything that causes taxes not to be paid, there is no revenue to the developer. The developer is essentially financing these eligible activities using their own tax dollars. If there is no tax increase, there's no payment.
But, but then who's on the hook for it? I mean, somebody's got to pay it.
No, no, nobody has to pay for it.
Yeah, this is not a loan.
This is not a loan, this is not debt, this is, this is a pledge to provide the tax increment. Now, I would add to that, one of the companion documents that will happen as part of the Brownfield Plan implementation is a development and reimbursement agreement, by which we limit the developer's reimbursement total to the amount of dollars that are in this Brownfield Plan, and, and make it clear that taxes need to be current, taxes need to be paid, that they're only reimbursed annually from the available tax increment that's created. If nobody pays the taxes, or there's no development, there is no reimbursement.
Thank you for explaining that, Dave. Any other questions? I need a motion for the zero zero six dash two zero two on the Brownfield Plan for the Marine City apartment.
This is Jake, I'll make a motion, we approve resolution number zero zero six dash two zero two one. Support, Commissioner Kreidler?
We have a motion and support, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
No.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
No.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to Trails Presentation, Sherri Faust, are you there, and thank you very much for waiting.
Good evening, I am. Hi, I'm Sherri Faust, with Friends of the St. Clair River, and representing the Regional Trails Board tonight, just to share with you and talk about a window of opportunity that has opened for Marine City to finish and connect your Bridge to Bay Trail, and on behalf of the Regional Trails Board, I want to encourage you to start down this path, because Marine City is part of Phase Two of Bridge to Bay Trail work that's rolling out right now, and there is some urgency with this, as there are important funding deadlines ahead. One of the most unprecedented opportunities right now for Marine City to participate in the Bridge to Bay Trail work is that, and by working with the Regional Trails Board, is that under the coordination of the Community Foundation of St. Clair County, we're working with the Wilson Foundation to get money for Bridge to Bay Trail projects, in the tune of across the region, four point five million dollars, of which a portion of that is coming to Marine City. So, this resource is not something that a community has access to, working independently, but working collaboratively with the Regional Trails Board, we have access to drive this Wilson Foundation money for trail work in Marine City. So, the trail work that's ready to get underway in Marine City, and really, the, the missing piece of your trail is getting people into downtown, and I keep hearing that's the theme of tonight's meeting, is getting people into downtown and getting people into your businesses, and right now, the Bridge to Bay Trail skirts out, you know, is on the outskirts of your town, on the, on the western side of your town, so there's been a new downtown loop identified as part of the Bridge to Bay Trail, it really is the easiest part of your new Bridge to Bay Trail route, and so this is the route that we're focusing on right now for you, as part of Phase Two work. It's received public input already from local trail advisory committee, and there's many local trail advisory committee members on the call tonight, so I thank them also for being part of this meeting tonight, and they've been working on this since two thousand nineteen. So, the grant application deadline that's coming up, that fits your downtown loop, is an M.TAP grant, there's two windows to apply for, in June or October, and the downtown loop fits most easily into this M.TAP grant funding window. Also, we will be going to the Wilson Foundation, again, on behalf of the Community Foundation of St. Clair County, later this fall, to request funding for your trail work, that's earmarked to happen in Phase Two, and the Wilson Foundation funds are match for your M.TAP grant. So, just to give you an idea of some of the success that the Regional Trails Board has already had in securing money for other communities as part of Phase One trail work, just let you know what sort of exciting projects can come to Marine City because of this work. For instance, in St. Clair, the Regional Trails Board had helped cover a hundred percent of their trail funds for their project that they're doing, and that was nearly a one million dollar trail project, so no local funds were needed for trail construction in St. Clair. In Marysville, they had nearly two million dollars of trail projects underway, and eighty percent of that has been covered with Wilson Foundation funds and M.TAP grants, leaving Marysville with less than twenty percent match. And Port Huron, similar, is contributing only ten percent match for their trail projects. So, just in Phase One, the success that the Regional Trails Board has had represents ten new Bridge to Bay Trail projects completed for this region, so this is really the opportunity that's at hand right now for Marine City. It does come down to money, and there's this unprecedented opportunity to leverage Wilson Foundation funds with a potential M.TAP grant in June or October for your new downtown Bridge to Bay Trail loop. So, really working collaboratively with the Regional Trails Board is the most cost-effective way. Just to let you know about some other great things happening to benefit, to benefit trail projects in Marine City, is we just completed a seventy-five thousand dollar wayfinding and signage plan for the trail, so there is no comprehensive wayfinding and trail, or signage plan for the trail right now, but we've just completed that plan, and we're ready to implement it. So, we are including Marine City in a grant application coming up to the Community Foundation of Southeast Michigan, where we are going to be able to get funding for you to purchase a kiosk for your Bridge to Bay Trail. We can cover half the cost for you, and then, through the grant, and then you will cover the other half of that, but it's just an example of how working collaboratively on the Bridge to Bay Trail is really cost-effective, and we're able to help find you funds to start purchasing amenities for your trail. So, you know, just to tie in with the theme that I keep hearing about tonight, about the exciting Bell River waterfront development projects, and this downtown trail loop builds off that, and eventually will tie into a dual trailhead for you on the Bell River, where you'll have dual trailhead access for your kayak launch and your bike trail, which is just a really great connection for people to get off your river, off your trail, and down, and down downtown. And you've heard a couple times tonight about blue meets green, and this regional trail system is part of a large regional goal with the blue meets green. So, your next steps, to be ready for an M.TAP grant application window in June or October, there would be some upfront preliminary engineering design costs and the application costs, but I would encourage you to submit a grant to the Community Foundation of St. Clair County. Placemaking is their top priority, and this trail work falls under their placemaking priority. Their next grant meeting to decide on grant funds is in May, so this would be your next step, next thing to think about is a grant to the Community Foundation, and it can help cover your engineering design and your application costs. Jim Beer is on the call tonight, and he is the Trail Advisory Chair for St. Clair Trails Committee, and he has volunteered his time to help Marine City become application-ready. So, that's a huge help from Jim that's on the call tonight, so thank you, Jim. So, you have the full Regional Trails Board support, you have Blue Meets Green support for this, the Wilson Foundation is, is, funds are ready for you, we're here, ready to help you, and I know Marine City is not any stranger to trails, because I know from your master plan that trails ranked very high. So, I want to thank you for your time tonight to bring you up to speed on the Bridge to Bay Trail work, and get you excited about what's next for Marine City, and adding to your Bridge to Bay Trail.
Sherri, thank you very much for waiting for us for this meeting. I, I was just having lunch with Lori Eschenberg, and we were talking about the trail coming through Marine City. I used to do the Michigander, which is a week-long bike ride throughout the state of Michigan, I did it for years, and one of the things, so I'm very familiar with trails and looking for signs, because the most important sign on a long-distance bike ride is the bathroom sign, and when coming into Marine City, I noticed that there's a jog off on Pearl Street, and I was understanding that that was done that way, because of, it takes riders past the Marine City restrooms. I was hoping that maybe we could change that a little bit, and have them just continue to come down Broadway for the, you know, to, to get easier access to Marine City, it just makes the, the less jogs, the better, when it comes to Marine City, because I think it's an easy city, but some people can get confused, so. We also, I just wanted to let you know that we have a great grant writer in our city offices, and I hope that we can put her on this task.
Absolutely, and so the details of the routes don't have to be decided right now by the commission, those are details that can be worked out later to write an application to the Community Foundation, you don't have to know your exact route, as you begin the, to work on preliminary engineering designs, you can have engineering even vet different routes for you, and kind of look at what the cost analysis and benefit-cost ratio would be. So, I wouldn't get too worried about the exact routes right now, there's definitely time to work through those details, but most importantly is just to become application-ready for your project, so you, you'll become connected to the larger regional trail, the Bridge to Bay Trail's fifty-four miles, and we have this Phase One work going on right now, these ten routes, and these Phase One communities, you're going to be linked up to all of that, and we know that longer trail routes attract tourists, tourists want really long trail segments, and so that's going to help bring tourism to the area, we know that residents prefer the shorter distances, and you're creating a new downtown loop, will be able to get residents north and south of you into your downtown.
Yep, thank you, I, we appreciate you coming on and making your presentation.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on to the crack sealant order. Mike, you want to talk about that real briefly?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great, this is a program we do every year, this company here, we purchase our crack sealant through, they're the only company that will give us the melter for free, otherwise, we have to pay for the melter, which is quite a bit of money, so, just recommending that we stay with this program, and waive the bidding, so we can purchase the crack sealing for the next season coming up, and get the shot diesel melter machine for free with it.
Anybody have any questions for Mike? Okay, I need a motion to, there's actually two parts to this, I need a motion to waive competitive bid for the first motion.
Hendrick, so moved.
Support, Commissioner Kreidler?
We have a motion and support, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And now, I need a second motion to approve the crack sealant order, let me look at this, to purchase the sealant, correct?
I'll make the motion, this is Hendrick, I'll make the motion that we approve purchasing sealant from National Highway Maintenance System for a dollar four per pound, we have a budget of ten thousand split between the major local funds.
Support, Brian Ross.
We have a motion and support, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving down to salt order, Mike, you want to explain this quickly?
Sure, we belong to MyDeal, which is a fabulous thing for salt, what they do is they take the orders from all the communities, then they put it out for bids themselves, to get the best pricing. Usually, we, we spend about, well, it costs us about sixty dollars a ton, less than a private contractor, it's the great program, and is asking for the bidding to be waived and for me to... for the bidding to be, to be waived and for me to, uh, order salt.
Okay, I need a motion to waive competitive bidding.
So moved, Hendrick.
Jake, support.
We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Okay, now I need a motion to, um, approve salt for the, uh, or approve the purchase of salt through the MyDeal. Um, and I don't have a price though, right? It's just the best price?
Yeah, they will, we won't know our price until at least October.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the MyDeal for salt purchase for the 21-22 season.
Support Brian Ross.
We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And moving down to 11G, we have a sludge contract through, uh, Michigan Agribusiness Solutions. Mike, you want to explain?
Yeah, this is our sludge hauler at the sewer treatment plant. Um, we realized that the contract was out of date, and we have 500,000 gallons of sludge down there that needs to go away. And I'm asking for a three-year contract with these guys to extend their contracts so they can keep hauling to the fields that they have.
So I need, um, a motion to, um, approve the extension of the contract.
I'll make a motion, this is Hendrick, to approve a three-year extension to Michigan Agribusiness Solutions.
Brian Ross, support.
We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on, City Managers Report. Elaine?
Excuse me, can I say, can I say one more thing?
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Hey, I would like to invite any of the commissioners or the newer commissioners to do like we usually do, to take the tour of all your buildings and your plants, to make sure you, you, you know, they understand how they run, and what condition they're in. And when I send something up there, you understand what I'm trying to buy or what I'm trying to do. But I would like to invite you guys for a walkthrough. If you'd like to do that, you set, you set up a time with me. Um, I'll do, I'm open anytime you'd like to do this. Okay?
Mike, how long do you think that would take? Because I remember last year, we did, uh, the full tour, what was it, about two hours?
Uh, we could do it in probably about three hours if we took the bowl. If we went on the shorter route, just walking in the plants and everything, probably two hours.
Right. Yeah, okay. Thank you for the invite, and we'll, uh, we'll definitely set that up. I think the new commissioners, um, would enjoy the tour of the sewer plant for sure.
For sure. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any politician would.
Uh, City Managers Report, Elaine?
I would first of all like to thank Mike for sticking around. Um, obviously, this is a pretty long meeting with a couple really heavy things to talk about, so I'd like to thank Mike for that. Uh, I attended the Blue Meets Green Retreat and also the following leadership meeting on, uh, the Monday after that. I'm sure a lot of you have probably heard a little bit about the American Rescue Plan Act, which is a resource through the federal government that will be getting some, uh, local fiscal recovery fund money from the federal government in relation to COVID. Uh, the allocation amount that we're potentially looking at is $400,000. There are specific uses that are tied to this money. It includes, uh, COVID-19 assistance, premium pay for essential workers. Uh, it can help us bridge city revenue that's lost due to COVID-19, and it can also pay for infrastructure, which is a pretty compelling opportunity, because there are not a lot of things that give us money directly to use for infrastructure. A couple of the issues with this is that the U.S. Treasury can withhold up to 50,000, I'm sorry, up to 50% of the money for up to 12 months. Uh, timing-wise, it's something that will funnel through the federal government and then the state government. So it's something that, at the earliest, we would see is potentially in May, though there is certainly some speculation that the state may try and do a swap for revenue sharing for this money, like they did with the past COVID relief money that we received. So this is something that, uh, is on our radar. I don't think that it's something we're really going to focus too detailed on for this year's budget, though. Uh, it is something that we're going to keep staying on top of the latest news and getting any more information that we can regarding this. Uh, the money that they are going to be providing us will have to be expended by the end of 2024. So we're looking at some pretty long timeframes for this $400,000. Uh, the building demolition, uh, I'm sorry, not building demolition, the, the property at 260 South Parker, the demolition within the building is done. They have the walls framed in. Uh, they're going to be putting the windows in. They should be complete by about April 1st by, uh, Craig Smith. That way, they can stay on their schedule, because they need to start getting the drywall up by April 1st. Uh, had a meeting with tech security and high-tech at the site, so they're working on preparing their plans and cost estimates that will be before you in the future. And I also just wanted to make sure that everybody is aware that we're looking for applications for the vacant position for fire authority, and this would be for a Marine City resident. That's all I have.
Okay. Any questions for the, uh, City Manager?
Yes, please. Um, this is Commissioner Hendrick. Uh, Elaine, you, you guys also put a thing in our pack. It's about, uh, all the meetings coming up in April. Um, do you anticipate these all being Zoom?
There is certainly likelihood that it could be Zoom. Uh, the schools, I think, are closed through their spring break, so I think I heard until April 6th. So, uh, certainly we'll continue to monitor the circumstances. One of the big things going on right now is that there is, uh, a variant of the COVID that is highly contagious, and that seems to be what's going around right now. Um, it's been a roller coaster ride, and just asking for your patience in getting through this, uh, we're kind of all in it together and, and subject to the daily changes that we have to adhere to.
If anybody wants, uh, if anybody wants the face-to-face meetings, um, anymore, it's me. I'm, I'm, uh, looking forward to, uh, pounding my gavel and seeing all your smiling faces once again. So, um, believe me, the decision, uh, tonight to, to switch to a Zoom meeting, um, uh, was not an easy one, but, you know, public safety comes first. So I had to, we had to all look at that. So I, believe me, I'd, I'd love to go back to regular meetings, regular, regular everything. Anybody?
Yeah, in particular, in particular with the budget workshops coming up. Um, if you recall, we did actually have to do the budget workshop, the virtual, last year. So, uh, potentially be prepared for that, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Questions for Elaine? Okay, moving on to Commissioner Privilege. We'll go alphabetically as usual. Um, Commissioner Bryson?
I have nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Hendrick?
I'm going to pass tonight.
Commissioner Callahan?
I have nothing tonight.
Commissioner Clausen?
Planning Commission didn't meet, so I have nothing to report from Planning Commission. Uh, hopefully you can get back to get stuff to the, in the, in, in, uh, to get, thank
Commissioner Kreidler?
Nothing for me tonight.
Commissioner Ross?
Hey, just a reminder for people to be careful out there. It's really, really windy. So look for fallen branches and, uh, other things that the wind could, uh, hurt. And then the other thing that I just will recommend from my daily business, being an engineer for Ford Motor Company, uh, even before COVID, involved a variety of Zoom meeting type of things, a, a conference call and meeting. The one we use in particular is called WebEx. It's just from a different company. Um, but nonetheless, it, it can be very helpful and, you know, may be a part of our lives for a little bit longer. So I just, uh, can recommend, if anybody would want to reach out to me, I can recommend some headsets and other things that would potentially help, um, make the experience a little bit more enjoyable and immersive for you, if you're interested. So that's all.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I want to thank everybody, um, that attended the, uh, public hearings today. Um, I know it was, uh, different doing it on, via Zoom. I want to thank, thank Six Rivers Conservancy, and I also want to thank, thank our St. Clair County, uh, planners for being very patient with us while we were asking, uh, questions. Um, and I want to let everybody know that, uh, next week on the 24th, I'll be filming another Mayor Minute with Megan Pierce. She's our finance director, uh, here at the City Marine City. Um, we're going to be talking about taxes, water bills, and everything, um, financially related with the city. So hope to educate the public with, with a few things. Um, and I think that is it. I need a motion to adjourn.
Lisa Hendrick, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Brian Ross, support.
We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bry- Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yep.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good night, everyone.